We can call in our zone office to help us address those issues also.
Robin C. asks, if a community wants to install license plate readers, what is the process for connecting the beat to the APD to get notifications? Is it the same as connecting a camera to the vic?
It's actually easier than connecting a camera, provided that the LPR that you choose is something that's compatible with our system. So I would highly encourage anybody that was thinking about buying one of these for their community to check with the police foundation to make sure it's consistent. But once it is consistent, really all you have to do is request permission to share the information with us. We allow it, and that's all there is to it.
Brian H. asks, has the arrest quota been eliminated?
Yes, we've never had an arrest quota in the city of Atlanta. Been on for 21 years. We do not use anything like that. This question has come up in some other neighborhood groups. So what we use and what I've tried to explain in the past is we have the officers fill out a daily activity worksheet. And basically, all we're looking for is just trying to account for where the officer was for his eight-hour shift. That way, we can go back and check it with crime data. Like, okay, we had a spike in crime in a certain area. Was that officer in that area? And vice versa. We don't encourage them to make any arrests or do anything of that nature.
Alexander wants to know, what are you doing about crime in Zone 4 and the juveniles?
So myself and Captain Kenton, we monitor the crime on a daily basis. Kind of between the two of us, we can probably read every report that comes through there that's generated. And by doing that, you know, we're able to adjust our resources and put them in the areas where we're seeing the issues in real time. As far as the juvenile component, we have a truancy officer that works during the day hours, and that officer is actively engaged, has developed a report with a lot of the juvenile offenders in our zone. She's been in that job a couple of years, and so she knows most of the juveniles. Now, our biggest challenge with juveniles has been our Camp Creek marketplace, where up until about a month ago, they would congregate kind of after the movies. However, once we identified this issue, we collaborated with East Point Police and Fulton County Sheriff's Office and came up with a mini group of people that identified these kids, not only the kids but their parents. And we gave the parents talking points as to why it wasn't a good idea for them to drop their kids off and leave them unattended at that marketplace. And that worked, because what we're not trying to do is arrest our way out of any juvenile problems we have in Zone 4.
Lee wants to know, what is a non-emergency phone number?
So that number is 404-756-1903, and we're located at 1125 Cascade Circle.
And Lee also wants to know, what about having a town hall meeting for our youth ages 18 to 25?
Hi, Lee. This is Shaka Spikes, Director of Public Affairs for APD. Thanks for that question. Want you to know that this is the first of many town hall meetings that we will host. They will be virtual. They'll be hosted at each zone. We'll have a month where they will give their own town hall. We also are looking into having a town hall that will be for the specific age group of 18 to 25. We also plan to work with the Atlanta-based colleges and universities to ensure that we are attracting a young demographic. And thanks for that question.
Elizabeth M. asks, will the APD help promote the need to have a clear address posted on mailbox?
Well, in all honesty, that's not a plan. We can help promote it, but that actually comes from a different department within the city. That would actually come from our council and legislators that would require that. But I think that would be quite helpful.
Caesar O. wants to know, how do we best report gunfire?
We ask the 911 in real time. That way, we can have a record of that call coming in, and the officer can go out and they can address it, and they can look for shell cases and try and use those shell cases to build a crime. So if you don't think it's an emergency, you can use our non-emergency number, but we encourage you to dial 911 anytime you hear gunfire.
Can you repeat the non-emergency number for us?
Sure. It is 404-756-1903.
I think it's important that we distinguish between just Zone 4 non-emergency number, because I think some people may need to call. The other number, even though it goes 911, but that number is 658-6666. That's correct. 404-658-6666.
Helen S. asks, what can be done about illegal dumping in this area, especially tires?
Hello, everybody. Hello, Zone 4 and guests. So in reference to illegal dumping that falls under my shop and our code enforcement unit, if you report it either directly to us or through 311, it routes directly to us. And, you know, we'll go to the area and inspect it. What we've been trying to do to kind of get around a lot of those complaints to make sure that we come to a resolution is by setting cameras up or covert cameras. We're working with Public Works right now to try to initiate a program to do that as well. We're using our license plate readers. So if you have any complaints about a specific area, you let us know about it. We'll go to that area, inspect it, and do what we can to try to identify any vehicles that are doing any legal dumping.
Anita W. wants to know, should I call 911 when I hear loud music in the neighborhood?
So you have both options. You can call 911, the emergency number, or the non-emergency number we gave out. Either way, we will respond and address that issue.
He also wants to know, what to do if I see large commercial vehicles parked in the neighborhood?
Okay, for large commercial vehicles, definitely get in contact with us. Either call us at the precinct, or you go ahead and call 911 and have the beat officer come out so they can give us that information. What we've done in Zone 4 is we actually have a specific officer that we have assigned to that that's taken some additional training to handle those quality of life issues. And the officer character will come out. He will be able to address that issue. We've been able to address some of those issues because of the size of the street, but then depending on the actual street and its location, we've actually had to reach out to Public Works, have additional signs installed. So there's a process that we're familiar with. So depending on the location and the street, we're more than able to address it.
Brenda W. wants to know, has the direct patrol or the Cascades at Cascade Falls Drive been deployed and consistent?
Yes, we have been addressing that anytime possible that beat officer does drive through the neighborhood. It could be in different times. It could be different days of the week. We constantly have them go through that neighborhood and visit it. Now, they may not stop for a long time, or, you know, maybe just pass it through. But as this time goes on and as we start moving out of this COVID-19, we've actually with other communities set up meetings with the neighborhoods where we actually have the beat officer stop for 15, 20 minutes, or 30 minutes at a time to actually meet concerns residents of that area. So we would be happy to set that up for you if that's something that you'd be interested in doing. So please call the precinct and ask for myself, Captain Kenton, and then I'll be happy to work with you on that.
Sherry W. asks, when will the city allow you to staff a mini precinct near the perimeter since Greenbrier Mini Precinct is no longer being used to decrease response time to the southwesternmost portion of the zone, while allowing the cars in the area to work from there, save more lives, and be logistically efficient? Also, what will it take to get a mini precinct in Oakland City, like in my previous neighborhood of Kirkwood? Additionally, what can APD do to step up regular patrols through the neighborhood?
So to address the first question about creating a mini precinct, we've not abandoned the Greenbrier precinct. We're still operating out of it. But we are looking at additional areas in the Greenbrier 285 area currently. And so we will continue to evaluate and try and work on doing that. But I think it's important that you recognize that we do not deploy from our precincts, our mini precincts. They are just, those facilities are just for administrative purposes. We get better resources than when we have our officers, better response, sorry, when we have our officers out on patrol. As it relates to the Oakland City precinct, we've not looked at that. But as we always do, we continue to evaluate the need for resources in precincts throughout the area. Oakland City has not come up as a location, but we are continuing to evaluate.
Julie B. asks, and this is in reference to 1841 Children's Drive. There is already a problem with people speeding on these roads. How would this new development impact that situation?
So we have a traffic car that we run on all three shifts. So what we can do is push that traffic car out there to monitor that location for a couple of days. If need be, we can get our motors to come out there also and run radar to determine if there is a speeding problem out there.
Additionally, one of the things that we can do is a traffic study to see if there need to be other techniques used to address traffic control out in that area as well.
Jackie S. asks, is the neighborhood watch program still in effect? And this is in reference to 1955 King George Lane.
Okay, Jackie, that neighborhood watch is not going to be effective. You're not sure who the block captains are and who's part of it. That means it's probably kind of fallen to the wayside. I'm assuming that the signs are still up there. So I actually reached out to our Inspector Heber, and you guys did have a program a long time ago. So she is more than happy to get with you if you could call the precinct or just leave a message for myself, and we'll get that resolved, of restarting that neighborhood watch program. Because all you do is you just need a couple residents, and our COGS unit actually offers training, and usually on Saturdays by Zoom. And we can get that all set back up for you.
Gregory B. wants to know, can you help with the drug house across from my home at Temple Trail in Stone Road? It should be closed down.
Yes, Gregory. I'm not sure which drug house you will, but I'll leave my email in the chat, and you can just send me an email and let me know which location you're talking about specifically. And we'll certainly look into that and see if we can get that issue resolved for you.
Okay, so Glenn wants to know, can you step up patrols in the Children's Cascade Campbellton Corridor? There are gunshots every night. Sabrina wants to know, there has been a lot of gunfire and shootings in Oakland City community as of late. How do we get increased police patrols slash presence in the community? And then last, Brenda wants to know, we have often, I'm sorry, we often have gunfire at the Melvin Street Park. The hoops were taken down during the pandemic, and it stopped. Most recently, the park basketball court was renovated, and the hoops are back up. The gunfire has started back, and someone would get hurt or killed. How can we prevent further shootings at the park?
So Glenn and Sabrina, what I'll say is that if you call the precinct and ask for a direct patrol, we will put in a direct patrol for those locations. But we are out there. We are visible in that Cascade Campbellton Corridor. But anytime you think you're not seeing enough police visibility, all means call the precinct, put in a direct patrol. And what that does is we will read that direct patrol out to the watch, and the officers, the beat officers are required to go by those locations at least a couple of times on their shift, doing every shift. The third part about that with the Melvin Park, we've seen an increase in activity in our law parks. Due to COVID, people are now getting back out into the park. We recognize that. So for the summer months, the captain and I have dedicated, supervise it to the parks every day on every shift. And so what they're responsible for is going by those parks at least once an hour and reporting back to us, not only on everything from crowd control to illegal grilling in those parks, and they're working in tandem with our parks and recreation people to make sure that, you know, you can have a happy experience and a pleasurable experience when you use those parks in the Zone 4 space.
Alex D. wants to know, can APD partner to install speed bumps on Oakland Drive and other main streets to curb speeding without necessarily needing to ticket all the time?
So I think it's important to understand that the police department is not in charge or we are not responsible for the speed bump. That is done through a traffic evaluation through DOT. And so they actually just come to us for our recommendation afterwards. But it is normally initiated through the community, and they do a traffic study to see if it's even feasible.
Leanne P. wants to know, crime, why isn't Zone 4 sending out cruisers to drive through our neighborhood?
Again, we try and touch on every street and every neighborhood we can throughout our watch. And if you're not seeing a police officer out there, reach out to myself or Captain Kenton or the watch commanders, and we'll ensure that police come out to your house. And we can actually have them come out and speak to you and list any issues you may have, or the captain and I'll be more than happy to come out if you think you're not seeing enough police officers in your area.
Corey W. wants to know, what is the plan to increase police recruitment and the police presence in Zone 4?
So as it relates to police recruitment, right now, our 2021 plan is to increase our level of recruitment. Clearly, many of you know that we, law enforcement policing as a whole, took a significant hit during 2020. And many of our efforts were stifled due to COVID. But right now, we're looking at different platforms to increase our recruitment. Currently, we're doing a, we're now doing some onsite as well as a lot of social media as it relates to recruiting. So we're doing everything we can to improve our recruitment efforts.
Sarah wants to know, what is the long-term strategy for policing when you are understaffed?
So the best thing that we can do when we are understaffed is to continue to strengthen the level of relying on our partnerships to include the community as a whole. We recognize that we really work better together, especially in these times, the times that we are in currently. But additionally, as stated just earlier, we are strengthening our efforts around recruitment and working with the mayor's office, as well as working with Atlanta Police Foundation to strengthen what we are doing around recruitment to address that long term.
Judy W. wants to know, what actions is the city of Atlanta doing to recruit and retain police officers?
So again, we're working with the mayor's office as it relates to what we can do to retain our officers, looking at different initiatives, different pay studies, to see what we can do to retain them. But as I think I spoke on the recruitment, we're doing everything as we can to increase our recruitment efforts by 30% this year by going to different sites as we find more cities opening up and our ability to travel and have one-on-one conversations with recruits. Additionally, we are looking at our technology as well internally to see how we can better, how we can make that easier for people to apply online as well.
Judy also wants to know, are police officers evaluated on the number of cases made or relationship building within their beats?
The police are evaluated on everything that they do. We don't look at the number of cases, but we do look at the number of relationships that they are establishing. That's one of the things that we clearly are looking at to make sure that officers inside their beats are building relationships.
Zenobia wants to know, how can we get assistance at Cascade Park subdivision where we have an ATV rider or driver tearing up our grass and riding between our homes? We have an idea of where he, they live, but need help from you to address the issue. I also have photos and video. Additionally, Latoya wants to know, what is being done to combat the ATVs and dirt bikes on the road?
So I'll answer the first part of that, and I'll punt the second part to Deputy Chief Murphy. So Zenobia, just get with me. If you have video and photos of that individual that's tearing up your grass and riding between your homes, by all means, give that video to us, and we'll have our criminal investigative unit come out there and investigate and issue citations as needed as it relates to that.
So in reference to the ATV and dirt bike issue, off-road vehicles, we actually have partnered up with our state and county partner jurisdictions, departments, rather, and we're going to have a really, really robust collaboration where we're going to specifically make sure that we emphasize our enforcement on those vehicles. And what that looks like is we'll, one, have extra enforcement officers out there to address the issues and in the areas. So we'll have the air unit to look up, look in areas where we see that there's any congregation, that we know the historical locations where they do congregate. We'll have offices already set up there to make sure that no one congregates in these areas. And then the other piece of that is to make sure that we start identifying any that we are not able to at that time address the situation. But the second piece of that is to also try to identify any of these vehicles for future investigation. So that will start actually pretty soon. You should see a difference in that happening in your area. If you don't, then real-time calls to the 911 center will address it immediately.
Carrie C. asks, are curfews needed?
Yes, curfews are needed, and the city of Atlanta does have a curfew that starts from 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM, Sunday through Thursday, and it's midnight to 6:00 AM on Fridays and Saturdays. Our overnight unit that works from 6:00, 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM, they enforce curfew violations, and they actively go out and gate to you that they see that are out after curfew, and they take them home to the parents and routinely cite the parents if we can locate the parents of these juveniles that are out past our curfew.
Joy P. wants to know, the status of VU2?
Okay, so VU2 is still closed and is still tied up in court. So the Deja Vu Club itself has actually moved to another location outside of Zone 4. But we're going to keep pressure on our location in Zone 4 at 29097 Hamilton Road there. But for the MPUR residents, I'll be reaching out to you guys again, because as I'm working with the prosecutor on the case, she has asked to have residents come in and actually talk and give impact statements. So I will definitely be following up with you guys on that and on that club location. But I've been out there every time COVID, I'm sorry, license and permits has been out there. And last time we were out there, when we seized all the alcohol. So I'll continue to give you guys, the MPUs, the latest updates or whatever I have as a status so that club can continue to go forward.
Chris B. asks, there is an executive order about wearing masks in public. How is this being enforced, and what education measures is being provided?
Hello, Chris B. My name is Todd Coit. I'm the Assistant Chief for the Atlanta Police Department. On a daily basis, our officers go out and educate the public on the importance of wearing masks. It's a health concern that affects all of us, not just the department, but the citizens of Atlanta. Also, to enforce the executive order, we have our license and permits team goes out with the Health Department and also the Atlanta Fire Rescue Department on a nightly basis and visits clubs, lounges, and restaurants to make sure that those people, those businesses are adhering to the executive order. If they are not adhering to the executive order, they get a warning, and it can escalate into that person or that manager getting a ticket.
And Ida C. wants to know, why is it necessary to pre-register for a community town hall meeting? The town hall meeting should be open to all.
I am Sergeant John Chafee with the Public Affairs Unit. I'll answer that one. So our goal here is to hold multiple town hall events geared towards specific people. So we want our focus to remain on Zone 4 tonight, and this is an effort to ensure we don't end up distracted by questions that don't pertain to each of you. So that is the end of the questions that were submitted to us ahead of tonight's meeting. So we've had some come in during the meeting, and so we're going to begin reading some of those right now to you. So the first one, can APD create a list of beat officers for the various NPUs in Zone 4? That's written by Karen B.
Hey, Karen. Yes, pre-COVID, we would actually bring the beat officer out there to the MPU meeting so that they could be introduced to them. But yes, that's a very good idea. We will start pushing that list out. But more importantly, we'll start by bringing that officer in and allowing them to participate also in the MPU meetings while they're being held virtually.
So the next question is by Jason Page. We know as the weather warms, that ATV activity will increase. Can you please explain the Zone's strategy to deal with the issue?
Hello, my name is Deputy Chief Timothy Pink. And what I wanted to say about that ATV issue is not only is it affecting the Zone 4 community, there's an overall strategy for us to work collectively with our Community Services Division, who deals with those types of processes. But what we want to do is make sure that we focus on the Zone 4 footprint, but be able to follow that activity as it leaves Zone 4 and move to other areas of the city to ultimately ensure that we're able to have a more successful crackdown on the activity altogether.
So no name given on this one, but are folks starting to call the PAD program? That's Pre-Arest Diversion Program in Zone 4?
Yes, they are. In fact, we've, since being trained February 1st, have successfully had five diversions so far. Now, they just recently, as we just rolled out with the last couple MPU meetings, we just started rolling it out to the 311 system. So now you guys now have the opportunity in Zone 4 to actually call 311 and make a referral yourself if you see something that you think the PAD program could assist you with without calling 911. So that is now available. So both sides of the program are now available in Zone 4.
Okay. So the next question, Leanne P., and she asks, why are you not having town hall meetings on a quarterly basis? And I'll go ahead and answer that. Again, this is Sergeant John Chafee. So this is our first. This is something that obviously is a little bit new to us. So this is something that we are looking at. We're going to do one for each zone, and then we're going to begin looking at doing some for the different age groups. But it's kind of early on, and that may be something that we consider moving forward. All right. So the next question, Imani M., lots of gunfire in the Camp Creek area and what sounds like racing. What can we do about this?
So again, as I spoke earlier, that Camp Creek area is kind of an apex with the city of Atlanta and East Point Police. So right now, myself, the East Point Chief, and Fulton County Sheriff's Department has came up with a force multiplier. We each provide officers down there in that space on the weekends. We recognize there are a lot of club activity down there, and that there is some racing down there. So we are out there. We are visible in that area, and we are aggressively leasing that area for street races and other illegal activity to occur out there.
So the next question is from Leanne P. Please provide the name and contact information for the beat cop that covers Heritage Valley.
I don't know the beat officer's name right now, but what I'll do is we'll provide a list of every beat officer for every beat, and we'll be pushing that information out to the MPU meetings.
Next from Leanne P., how are you addressing the drag racing on Fairburn?
Anytime we hear drag racing or you see drag racing, we encourage you to call 911. We are responding to those calls. Now, the response time may be a little slower, because what we're seeing with that drag racing, usually there are 10 to 15 cars out there. So we do not want to send one patrol car out there. So generally, when we get the drag racing calls of 10 to 15 cars drag racing, we are sending multiple units out there for officer safety. But we are responding as quick as we can to those calls.
All right. And this question is directed at Chief Brian. The previous chief told us in our last town hall that Zone 4 was too large by her standards, and it would be her desire to split the zone. Do you share that belief?
Zone 4 is our second-largest landmass zone inside this city. We recognize that it is a large zone. We continue to evaluate the resources that we have out there to include the establishing of an additional zone to minimize that space. So absolutely, it is a large zone, but it is our responsibility to just make sure that they have the resources available and that also that the beats are designed and the zones are designed that the officers assign that can respond in a timely fashion. So the answer, yes, it is a large zone. Do I believe it need to be cut in half? Well, that's to be determined by the studies to determine how quickly we can get officers to respond.
Okay, Chief and all of the members of Zone 4. Okay, chief and all of the members of Zone 4, we're going to have three more questions. After those three questions are answered, what will happen is we will allow you to ask questions. We ask that you raise your hand on your computer on the Zoom application. You should see an option to raise your hand. It looks like a little hand. When you raise your hand, we will recognize you, but please be mindful, don't speak until we recognize you and we'll unmute your screen. So the first question we have amongst our last three is, there has been an increase in gunfire in our neighborhood, Heritage Valley. This is an issue that is fairly new. Are you meeting with the mayor and councilwoman to address this issue? Who is the Zone 4 Community Engagement Representative? This question is from Leanne Patterson.
So I'll start by saying that, yes, I meet with the council members on a regular basis as it relates to issues in all the communities out there. And so, you know, we look at each community and look at the needs of that specific community and try and address those needs on an individual basis.
As for me, I meet with the mayor on a regular basis, but I also meet with the Zone Commander. And we all meet collectively at least once a week, but talk about crime daily. And so anytime that we see a rising or a spike, we immediately put a strategy in place to try to address those issues.
Next question, would attendance in this meeting qualify for NWP points?
I'll follow up with you on that with Inspector Herbert.
And that question is from Elizabeth Murray.
That would be from her.
Our last question is, can you address any coordinated efforts Zone 4 APD may be doing with other departments and AUC Public Safety Units to deal with multiple issues in our zone? For example, ATVs, robberies, et cetera.
Yes, good evening again. This is Deputy Chief Timothy Peake with Field Operations. So the Atlanta Police Department in conjunction with Zone 4 and all zones are constantly looking at crime trends and looking at what's happening. And at the same time, building partnerships with all of our surrounding partners and jurisdictions. One of the things that we will always do, and we actually conduct details pretty regularly, is that when we see large influxes of certain types of crimes, we will actually utilize resources across divisions and across zones to ensure that we have the necessary manpower and resources to come into that area and be effective in what we're doing. Thus far, so far, we've seen some good results from doing this, and this is a process that we anticipate continuing. We just ask that when you see whatever is happening, then please ensure that you reach out and dial 911 and utilize whatever resources because of one thing, we know that if we don't, if it's not reported, then it's not happening. And we always want to be aware of what's going on in the city of Atlanta.
At this time, we're going to open up for questions. If you have a question, please raise your hand. We will recognize you and then we will unmute you.
Elizabeth Murray has a question, but she's not muted.
Elizabeth Murray, you can now unmute yourself, please.
My question, hi. My question was placed in the chat and it was.
One second.
Hold one moment so we can hear you clearly.
Is it lining? It wasn't plugged in all the way. Is it mine in or is it Mike?
Can you hear me now?
Hold one moment, Elizabeth.
Say something again, please.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for acknowledging my hand. I did lower it because my question was answered through the chat. I asked the question about gaining points for the Neighborhood Watch Program as a result of participating in this meeting. So I need to get a contact number for Inspector Hebert.
Can you call the precinct for us? Can you leave a message? And like I said, Major Tyus and myself, Captain Canton, will have our emails in the chat for you. If you could, just shoot me an email and I will make sure that I get that to Inspector Hebert in the morning to get that evaluated.
Thank you. And I would like to say every now and then I do see officers patrolling my particular neighborhood, and I do appreciate that.
Great, thank you.
All right, next question, please raise your hand. Are there any other questions?
Sherri Williams has a question.
Sherri Williams, unmute yourself, please. You muted yourself again.
There we go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I want to, I know that most of you realize that residents understand that APD is working under extremely challenging times. We, I want to say this on behalf of most Atlanta residents that we really want to thank all of you for continuing to show up and doing your best to try to protect us under these challenging times. We get frustrated because these are challenging times. And we want to continue to work with you to help keep our streets safer. And I want to personally thank Celeste Murphy, who's no longer in Zone 4. We miss you and we appreciate all that Major Tyus is doing, and we continue to challenge him. And we are sure you can tell him that you know how he feels. We are always trying to get the best that we believe that we deserve in Zone 4. And we hope that the staff shortage will not continue. We also hope that the Citizens Police Academy will at some point restart, of which I am a proud graduate of. And we will continue to call on you, and we do look forward to working with you in the future. So don't get mad at us when we challenge you because we will continue. But thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams, and thank you as well, Ms. Murray. Are there any other questions?
I want to, I want to, Ms. Williams, thank you so much for those comments. Quite often, people ask me, chief, what is it that we can do for the men and women of the Atlanta Police Department? And I always start with just by saying, telling them thank you, because it is a very stressful time, not just for you all, the citizens, but for the men and women of the Atlanta Police Department and many of the first responders that have continued to work continuously through this COVID period. And so when you start with thank you, I think that that goes a very long way. But you touched on something that, a question that was asked earlier, and I think it needs to be clarified just a little bit. When the question was asked around staffing for Zone 4, and the captain did a good job of telling you how many beat cars that we generally have as a relation to the zone itself. But the staffing for each zone is much more significant than just the number of patrol cars that you have. The zone itself will have a crime fighting element to it that is at the discretion of the Zone Commander and their captain as well. But as you can see, the men and women around this table each run a division with additional resources that when a zone needs assistance, each one of these division commanders send resources over to help in that staffing. So no zone is generally staffed with just 14 people at any given time. We move our resources around to address crime as we, as we see it increasing. But then additionally, on the very end, you talked about that staffing. And I want to, I'm so proud to say that Chief Gibbs, who's in charge of recruitment and background, as well as our academy, we are still, even during the COVID period, getting people through our academy. We just had a number of officers, 24 officers sitting straight just recently. We're looking forward to the next class graduating relatively soon.
Thank you, chief. Are there any other questions?
Yes, Leanne Patterson.
Leanne Patterson, and then we'll go to Nick Hess.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much for having this town hall meeting. My question is, with all of the drag racing and the speed of the cars that go up and down Fairburn, and I am specifically speaking to the Heritage Valley end going towards Cascade, we have been asking for police cameras and also a stoplight to maybe slow down the traffic, you know, right there at Melvin Drive especially. Is there anything that you all have been talking about or are there plans in motion to do something about the speed of those cars and also the trucks that go up and down Fairburn towards the Cascade and Campbellton, you know, end? And that is my question. Thank you.
So I'll let chief, I'm sorry, Major Tyus talk about the specifics. But I can tell you, as I stated earlier, I've been working with the Atlanta DOT. They are responsible for doing traffic studies. Anytime you have an issue as it relates to continuous speeding in a particular area, the best measure to address it is not just through traffic enforcement by writing tickets, but actually putting other technology in place to address it. To include, it may require us to put up lights or stop sign on the street. But a traffic study needs to be done to, to address it long term. But short term, that is done through enforcement, and I'm certain Major Tyus can speak to what he can contribute to that.
Yes, what I was going to say is that we are running a traffic card out there, and that was one of the areas we target, the Melvin Drive corridor out there. I think you and I have went back and forth on the MPU meetings about what's going on out there. We have written several citations out there. And again, you know, unfortunately, it's not the same individual. It's just that there are tons of cars that come out that way. And as the chief said, there really needs to be a traffic study out there so that we can really just kind of get down to the root of the problem out there. As far as the commercial vehicles, we haven't been seeing as many of them as of late since we've been letting traffic out there. But I'm pretty sure they're still coming through there. And I know the wear and tear on that road is just getting worse. So yes, I am sympathetic to your needs. I will continue to push that traffic card down until we can get a traffic study or traffic light out there. We will continue with enforcement piece of it from its own force.
So next, we'll have a question from Nick Hess, followed by Corey Woods.
Hi there. I was just wondering, in the light of, of course, the COVID restrictions, how are the At Promise Centers moving, you know, operating these days?
So the At Promise Center is actually adhering to the COVID protocol as well. They have, they have very little activity in them now. But as we can see, but they are seeing a small group of people, very small, but they are adhering to the COVID protocol.
And Nick, just so you all know, the members of the command staff, we don't have on our masks, but we have been vaccinated. Once we're done, we will put our masks back on. So I wanted to just make sure you all were aware. And since we have Karen Rogers, I know I'm putting you on the spot, but Karen, do you want to answer anything related to the At Promise Center? We're about to get unmuted. Hold on. Okay, you can unmute now, Karen.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Karen Rogers, Director of Community Development for the Atlanta Police Foundation. And so we do have activity at the At Promise Centers. During the early days of COVID, we quickly realized that there were a large population of kids that were out on the street, but they did not have opportunities for virtual learning. So we actually have a school on the move program. And one of those locations is actually at our PAST centers as well. I think it's about eight locations. Where we've invested in retired school teachers and mentors and tutors. And so instead of those kids coming, staying at home or in the street and not doing virtual school at all, they actually come to the center. So I'm right now is physically based at the center on Metropolitan Parkway. And we have full capacity of those kids coming in every day doing virtual schools. So at those locations, that's what's happening right now. And we are seeing a little bit of an increase where we have to, we have behavior specialists on site. And we're seeing an increase in some of those numbers of people coming in and needing help. And for this district, the At Promise Center on Campbellton Road is in construction. We hope to have a certificate of occupancy sometime in August, September. I'll be looking at a soft opening in November, December, and open to the public in January. So there will be an At Promise Center in Zone 4 in partnership with the YMCA.
Next question is from Corey Woods. Unmute Corey for us.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
I was just wondering whether there had been any discussion within the city of Atlanta, or even more specifically Zone 4, about the use of any gunfire detection technology systems that are used in other cities that have gun control and gunfire issues since there appears to be somewhat of an officer shortage. But then there also appear to be multiple areas in Zone 4 that experience gunfire on seemingly a daily basis. And the response times appear to be quicker with those systems since the police know that there is gunfire immediately as opposed to someone having to call 911.
Hello, Corey. This is Karen Sherbahn, Deputy Chief for Strategic Projects. We are actually assessing the effectiveness of a pilot program that was recently completed using ShotSpotter. That was done in conjunction with Georgia Power and Atlanta Police Foundation. We're looking at that to see how effective it is for us deploying our officers in a timely manner to actually make arrests and to actually arrest those that have guns in their possession. Currently, we're using.
I think you may have been muted because I can't hear you at all now. Oh, there, there it is.
Sorry about that, Corey. Where did you last hear me? What did you last hear, Corey?
When you were talking about the pilot programs, but you were looking to see what would happen with the response time with the officers in Zone 4?
Yes, sir. We are assessing the pilot program, determine how effective it was in us making arrests of individuals with guns, those that were actually discharging the weapons, and finding individuals that were injured by gunfire. We hope to have a full report out on that to the chief to evaluate. In the meantime, the calls to 911 are critical. We utilize those to deploy our Apex Team, which is focused on arresting those that have guns or transporting guns in your neighborhoods and are felons in possession of the weapons. They pose the most dangerous risks in Zone 4. We are able to deploy them currently using LPRs, the license plate readers, our cameras through our Bureau of Integration Center and your 911 calls. Once we know the effectiveness of that program, we'll be able to determine if that is viable to deploy to other neighborhoods.
Thank you.
So are there any other questions? If so, please raise your hand. Having none, we're going to toss it back over to our Chief of Police, Chief Rodney Bryant.
So members of the Zone 4 family, I really appreciate you all taking this time to share your concerns and your thoughts and to hear our responses. For us to get out of the state that we are in, it's going to take us operating as a strong partnership. You are our greatest resource, the eyes and the ears of the community, the ideas that you all have that you all can share with us for us to implement them. We've garnered a lot of issue, we've garnered a lot of information through this conversation, and we really appreciate you taking this time. As I stated again, thank you so much for everything that you're doing to help us get through this time.
All right. So thank you all for participating. We hope you found this event informative and helpful. We'll have a member of the Zone 4 commanders just give a quick closing statement before we leave.
Good evening. So I'll just reiterate what Chief Bryant said. We gained probably more insight than you there from this meeting. So this was very informative for myself, and the captain and I will take back everything you said. And we will push this effort. And we will push this information out all the way down to the beat officers so that they'll know your concern. And I think that's what we really got from this meeting, that you all want to know who beat officers are. You want to know who the officers are out there in the patrol car protecting your neighborhood. Because the captain and I are not out there in the patrol car. And so it is important that that beat officer know your concerns and that they hear your concerns. And we are taking these concerns back this evening. And we will be pushing it out to the watch commanders, who will be pushing it out to the sergeants, who will be pushing this information out to our beat officers and our investigators. So once again, thank you from the Zone 4 family.
All right. So that does conclude our meeting. I just want to say again, thank you. You are our first virtual town hall meeting. We appreciate your patience and your participation in this. So thank you all again, very much.